No more hate, 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 no more hate. Si se puede, 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 si se puede.
What do we want for our kids? I know we request to Mrs. Evans, that they secure our schools for our children. Our children are not secured in that school. They need to take action when?
Now!
When they need to take action?
Now!
Hello, hello. Yes. Salary for our teachers. We need that, of course, we need better salaries for our teachers. They work so much hard with their kids at school. They deserve it, they really do. No one like them. They're just the second moms at school. We really, we don't even have an idea how they help us. They need raises, all of them. And they need better mental, better everything, because they deserve everything. And they got it brought together with us, with the Latino community, with the Latino community. Together, together, we're gonna end it. It is the time for us to remember Mrs. Evans, that we need to secure our schools. We have already three threats on the school, saying that our kids are not safe. We have to add now, before something from Uyala or from other schools that have happened, happened here in Posable. This is a quiet city, always has been a quiet city. We're not gonna let that happen here. We want... It's set for us, it's set for us. And we ask Mrs. Evans to do her job and protect our kids and give a better salaries to our teachers, because those are the ones that broke their backs with our kids.
We want all children and all families be treated well, so that all have the same opportunities, no matter where you were born, or who your parents are, or what language you speak. Queremos que todos... It no depende en donde creciste, donde naciste, el color de tu piel, nada de eso. Todos son iguales, todos tienen un sitio aquí, and no it can't stop. Queremos que el sistema lo hace pasar.
Sí. We need to system act.
Sí, sí.
Y los latinos van primero. Los latinos, cuídate!
Si se puede, si se puede, si se puede, si se puede, si se puede. Yes, we can, yes, we can, yes, we can, yes, we can.
Okay, thanks, I'll say this in Spanish. If there are families interested in hablar in the school board meeting, I did a reservation, Acu ya did a reservation, and Manta too, because we only had 25 minutes to fill out the form. So, Acu, you have a space, I have a space, and I forgot who else.
Gloria has another space.
If you registered to speak, come on.
If you need a space, I have one, so that's it.
If you registered to speak, come on.
If you need a space, I have one, so that's it.
Who else registered?
But anyone can go in there.
Todos los latinos deben ir adentro. Todos los latinos deben ir adentro, porque ustedes son más importantes que nosotros. And also people of color, because we will have some speakers who are people of color, and we are united with all people who are... Cassidy, you have to go in. You have to go in. All those who, you know... And Kimmy has to go in. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And probably the teacher should go in. If anybody ordered shirts for Erica, please come and get them, because she has all sorts of shirts for people who've already paid for them. Yeah, Ben has to go in too. I guess we can have more people go in. Come on in! Let's see how many come in.
Wait, it's like that my brain, like this here.
No more Bill coming in, guys. I've seen a lot of those, a lot of bad coming in.
Can we hold on, Beth?
Come on in.
Come on in.
Entren.
Entran, todos.
They got plenty of room in the hallway, they're gonna open up downstairs.
Everybody try to come in and see what, where you can stand or be.
In the hallway, there's some chairs.
In the hallway, there's some chairs. And we want to take all the standing room there is also.
Yes, please do.
To introduce Travis Smith, who's the principal of Binland Elementary, and he's going to lead the data of Binland Elementary as well as their goal this year. I really appreciate Travis's leadership at Binland. He has stepped into the role and served very capably, and has done a lot of great things since he's returned back to work in that school district. So, this is Mike, I'll turn over to Travis, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Evans, thank you, school board, for the opportunity to come and talk about Binland Elementary, our school, some familiar faces in the audience, our staff and our students this evening. And I do talk a lot, so if I had a point, drag on, give me the sign. I do see some staff here, so you might probably love here, please be prepared. Tonight, we're gonna be talking about our school, Binland Elementary. We're gonna be looking at some key data sources, and we're gonna be doing an analysis of the data of our story for this year. We're gonna look at our focus goals, which is our school improvement plan at Binland that we've been working on all year long. And we're also gonna talk about some of our action steps. What have we been doing, how have we pivoted, how have we changed things throughout the year to support our students and our staff. I normally do a great job talking in front of students and teachers, and I know most of your teachers, so I act a little nervous, I'm sorry. My staff would be like, what are you talking about? Our goal, goal number one is our data, we're gonna be looking at two data points. It's gonna be ACADiNS data and IREDDI data. I'm gonna talk a little bit about our ACADiNS data. Our last assessment with ACADiNS was back in early January. So, we look at this data right now, because it's almost five months later, as, yes, there's been a lot of learning happening in the last five months. And so, when we talk about the ACADiNS assessments, it's really an opportunity for us to look at our students and possibly diagnose possible reading issues. There's very differences between ACADiNS and IREDDI. ACADiNS is an assessment, it's a predictor, a measurement more around foundational skills. It's a predictor to see how well our students are doing with reading. IREDDI is an assessment that actually measures standards within the reading domain. So, when we look at our overall reading data for ACADiNS, this is from fall to spring, we made some growths. Kindergarten, across the board, you're going to see kindergarten at Binland Elementary has done amazing job. Along with our other grades, our goal with ACADiNS is our students by end of year reach the 80% mark. Even though that we see that our students are not quite as of January at that benchmark, we know that through our ongoing two-week progress monitoring, we know where every one of our students in our building are at all times with how they're performing. IREDDI, love IREDDI, has an assessment to determine standards-based, driven, norm-referenced information about our kids. It's grade level specific, looking across the board, K-1, 2. The setup goal is 65% of our students at the beginning of year would reach benchmark by end of year, knowing that end of year does not stop until January, June 22nd. Assessment was given last month, so we still have a lot of learning that happens in the last two months of school. You can look at the top bar, it talks about most recent data. That's our most recent May data that tells us how our kindergarten is performed, and 92% of our students at Binland are on grade level for reading. With a 65% goal, we far succeeded that with 61% growth from fall to spring. Looking at first grade, our goal is 65% of our students being proficient, even though me as principal, 80 is my benchmark, 80 is my goal. We want, you know, we set goals, we want 80 or higher, knowing that this is a new assessment where you determine really how does this assessment work at the beginning of year, and knowing that we'll make adjustments as we move into next year. First grade, we went from 14% of our students proficient at the beginning of year to 67 at May, early May, with a 53% growth. Second grade, our goal being 65%, we started at 32% of our students in reading, with the end of 66%, with a 34% growth. I love looking at the graph from the bottom, because what we really want to see is the red shrink, we want to see the yellow shrink, we want to see the green grow, and we definitely see that through our K-3s, through our K-2, early foundations, goal one. Jumping over to math, math is an interesting story for us, knowing this year we have an adoption of a new curriculum, IREDDI, I love IREDDI, the math curriculum. It took us from a very traditional math curriculum to a very constructiveest math curriculum. We used to be very algorithm-driven, now we're very much into the strategies. What is the meaning behind math? So, it has been a challenge, but also a new added learning for our staff and our students, because the terminology, the words, the way that we talk about strategies is very different. Went to a first grade classroom, and they were working on a count-forward, count-backward strategy, and I'm like, I need to go be the man, this is new to me too. So, some great opportunities for us to grow. Looking at math, once again, across the board, we set a 65% goal. Kindergarten smashing with a 63% growth throughout the year from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. First grade from 12% to a 63, with a 51% growth, and second from a 22 to a 57. We know that moving into next year, math is gonna be a major focus at our school and the learning. So, I look at the national, it's very important. Yes, I do, I'm very data-driven, I want to see how we compare not only to North Kids App, other six, or five elementaries, but across the nation. So, when we talk across the nation in percentiles with IREDDI, we're talking about like schools across the United States that are like Binland Elementary. So, when we talk about kindergarten, math, and reading, we're in the 68th percentile nationally, which is good. I want to be the trend line on the VELP curve this way. Reading, our math, we're the 60th percentile, first grade 52, reading 51, math, and second grade 51, reading 47th percentile math. Some of our action steps throughout this year, and one thing that I really want to talk about is probably our multi-tier assistance support. We've really been focusing on how we support every student in our building. Over the last two years, we've been creating what's called the Binland Blueprint. The blueprint identifies specifically in our building what we do for every core subject area, and then if a student is not responding to what we're doing, how are we going to intervene? So, we have specific steps. Reading, if a student is not responding, what are we going to do? We have various specific steps outlined, that these are the interventions that we're gonna put in place, and we're not going to wait six months to put interventions, we're going to do it the next day after we have our data that supports us. If students are not at benchmark, every two weeks for progress monitoring to determine where our students are. So, if students are not responding to our progress monitoring, then what we're doing is not working, so we better to create a new strategy to support our students. Our blueprint is always one of those systems that's in place, that is always tweaking, changing, adapting, there's always a draft across it. In that blueprint, it talks about we as a staff, this is what we believe, we as students, this is our job, and as parents, what is our responsibilities. Goal number two is our data, we're gonna focus on some of our culture and climate data, and our attendance data, and our student well-being, being survey data. And this is just a graph that shows our response rate. One thing about the Binland community, our parents are very involved in our school, and if we ask them to participate in surveys, they participate in surveys. We're gonna start looking at our student culture and climate survey data. Our culture and survey data, this is specific to our students. We average right in the 40 to 59 percentile nationally. Looking and digging into that one question, one thing that we noticed that probably is an area of growth for us at our school is, let me make sure I say this right, students looking at our expectations as either fair or unfair. So, 64% of our students say that our expectations are fair or slightly fair. So, there's some students say that our expectations are not fair. So, how is we as a school to respond to that question? Well, we probably need more student input into what this fair look like, and how can we support them? Our family and culture data, one thing that we know about our school, that we're in the 80th to 99th percentile, our parents, our families are a huge support, and 86th percentile, we don't have to talk much about that one, we'll keep moving. It's pretty cool. We know also our panoram, student survey data, this is grades three through five. One rose, our students, when they took the assessment, identified self-management as a strength. Self-management, meaning how polite are you, how prepared are you, and how do you do in following directions, how do you do working independently? So, students assess themselves and measure themselves quite well within self-management. The area that we need to kind of dive in a little bit deeper is our self-epicacy. We talk about self-epicacy within the survey, it talks about how sure that you will remember the content after it's been talked to. How well do you complete all the work that you have assigned to? So, how do we support our students within that to increase? 60 to 70 percentile is good, but we want to strive for greater. You know, we always know that our greatest resource in our building is our students, our second is our staff. School climate, Binland teacher drive. Moving on to our attendance data. I don't know why it's showed up there. Attendance data. Oh, January, February, what? We had every sickness at Binland you can imagine. I was taught in the back, you know, the students coming to the door, and Mr. Smith, I don't feel good, and then you have the vomit down your front. We went through that for about a month and a half. The students coming in with the stomach flu one week, and then the next week going in with sinus flu. So, you can see that our attendance there, it wasn't the greatest, but I know that our students come to school when they can, and we encourage them to stay away when they're not 100%. So, let's have our attendance data. When we look at our goal number two, whole child, one thing I'm gonna focus in on here is the work of our counselor, Keller, Carolyn Mozman, who is the part of being. We have very specific S D L expectations of our students, and the staff has rocked that. Some areas of growth is our P B I S. We have a ticket system this year, I'm not sure how 100% effective it is, but something that we assess and evaluate as we move into next year. Goal number three is focusing specifically on success for all equity access and opportunity. We're gonna look at grades three through five, and then look at some more of our data. Once again, ACADiNS data, it's very old data for us right now, but it's still useful to drive some of our programming. Our goal always with ACADiNS is to be 80th percentile, second at 69%, fourth is 71%, and fifth is 62%. Jumping over to IREDDI, once again, when we talk about IREDDI with reading, we're measuring word recognition, vocabulary, phonics, we're measuring comprehension, both literature and non-literary. I'm sorry, my brain just completely went whoosh. Grades three is the 65% goal, they went from a 53 to 74 with a 21% gain. Grade four went from 26 to a 43 with a 17-point gain, knowing that as we look at our systems for next year, that we need to be looking at fifth grade, and even throughout the rest of this year, and what are our supports to make sure that all students within that grade are being successful. Fifth grade went from a 47 to a 65 with an 18% growth. Jumping over to math, another great story here, we have some great successes across the board. Looking at fifth grade, 71% of our students mathematics at benchmark, reaching our 65% goal, lots of growth. You know, when we first took this assessment at the beginning of the year, we were absolutely afraid, and we looked at this data and not knowing what was going to happen. It's like, how are we going to 15%? That's scary. But then, as we see, and we know now how to respond with this, no doubt my mind has been moving to next year, things will continue to be on the success rate. We can't beat that Binland Elementary, one thing that folks don't, I don't know if folks know or not know, Binland is a pretty diverse community. When you actually dive into who our students are, we're a diverse community across the board. 10% of our building are EL students, 24% of our students participate in dual-language programming, 14% of our students are, might have an I D P. So, it's important if we look, 24% of our students are STEM. So, as we dive into, look at who really specifically our school is, we cannot isolate all of our populations of students, and make sure that we're providing equitable access and growth for them. As we dive into our data, the one area that we definitely need to make sure that we continue provide supports for is our EL students. Our Hispanic students across the board are comparable as we group, these are grouped K-2, which is really hard, because some of these N sizes are so small. So, we group them in K-2 and K-3, 5. One thing that I love to shine, and I tell the dual-language story, is that when students participate in dual-language programming in K-1, 2, 3, you're not gonna see the growth that you would see as other students not participating in dual-language programming. These students are learning two languages simultaneously, so you wouldn't see their trajectory as growth as the same. Now, if they aren't, that's great. But when they're doing this, two languages, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and in the content area, but when I look at our K-3, 5, and our K-2, at 65% of our dual-language students meeting benchmark with reading, that's what we want to see. And that continues to boost to support EL into the middle school. Diving a little bit more into math. Math continues to be an area, I think that math continues to be an area not across, just Binland, but across NK. Some shiny lights there though, K-2, K-2 continues to do a great job. EL continues to be an area that we need to focus on, making sure that we're eliminating that opportunity gap, and all students have access. Blended learning, our panoramic culture and climate survey data, our staff feels comfortable with blended learning, our students feel comfortable with instructional technology, and we have really good relationships at Binland between teacher and student, students, sorry I'm talking fast, I know my tongue's a little stuck. I can feel people really know the back of my neck, sorry. This is kind of shares where we are nationally within reading and math in grades three, 4, 5. 58th percentile nationally in reading, 43, fourth grade for reading, 65, fifth grade for reading, 43 in third grade for math, 40 in fourth grade for math, and 59 in fifth grade for math. Some of our goals, some of our action plans for this year, I would say, two of our action plans, P D S A, as any student not at benchmark, we create a P D S A, Plan Do, Spend, Act, how are we supporting that student right now, and we're targeting specific skills. So, if a student is not where they need to be, we're targeting those skills. Mr. Smith is always saying, what's the P D S A? And how are we intervening, and how are we intervening quickly? Also, S P A intrums, we want really dive more into our S P A intrums, using those as a guiding resource to support our students, but also support our teachers. Sorry about the choke up there. Wow, Travis got emotional for a second, talking about teachers. Any questions for us?
Amen, I think that was a wonderful presentation, I went through it twice at home, and I think you're doing remarkable things. So, and as far as the math scores, that's a national, a national problem, and I think we're all working on that. So, thank you very much, I very much appreciate all the work you're doing.
Love this code, we're fortunate.
And I know this is hard, but we appreciate it.
It's exciting for this many people to get to hear about all this.
Binland, I thought they all came for me, and then I'm like...
I think Hillary just here appreciates your passion for students, for education, for teachers, the emotion is genuine.
Oh, it's genuine.
I'm curious, but the games impressive, I rechecked the stats because of some of those tremendous areas of growth, so bravo on that, bravo to the teachers who are making that happen. What is, what plans are in place to have the educational opportunities continue through the summer for students not to lose any of those games?
That's a big area. The good thing is that our students through July will continue to have access to our online platform, for, platform, MyChat, which is math and reading tailored specifically to their targeted need. So, that's one area that we have. I know that many of our students participate in the Kidset reading program. I would love to be able to say, hey, can we have a plan that we can send off with our students things to work on? I don't know if we're gonna get that strategic this year. I would love to be able to say, you know, kindergarten, you're going home, this is throughout the summer what we'd like to see you do, beyond... Beyond, continue to read, continue to read. And number, number sense and so on. Yeah, who needs a new words teacher? Can I dream?
Utilize the time.
Good question.
Students still at iReady over the summer?
They will for part of the summer and then in some time we have to roll the data forward, so we each have to shut everything down to roll here up. So the students are truly laid up. There'll be teaching assignments, major level assignments. And we have to, to, and open that.
And we use time to populate scoured.
Populate scoured. Populate clever, which means everything else.
Great, you're moving out.
Thanks for coming. That's a great presentation. I just want to say that the survey response rate, ninety-seven percent of your students to respond. That's awesome. Clearly, it's all right.
Clear some threats in there.
But no, that's outstanding. Ninety-seven percent.
Yeah, and I'll just close out again. Wonderful presentation and a great use of the data. What really jumped out to me was the culture that's at the school. I mean, and that's evident through the attendance data. I think your attendance data is probably a little bit higher than some of the other schools we're seeing. I think, you know, there's an argument is to make that could, you know, lead to some of the gains the students have in school. So I think between that attendance data and the responses you did for things that could get current culture. Most importantly, please thank your staff and, you know, just please pass our compliment.
Thank you, staff.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna echo, I think, what the board said. And one of the things that I appreciate very much is the final implementation of the new curriculum. I think the math curriculum is moving students in the right direction. I know that was a huge challenge for several staff to adopt that and implement it, but we're seeing gains that I think justify the move. And I'm excited to see what happens with the literacy adoption as well and what we're going to be able to do to all of our students. So thank you for sharing the data. Tell your staff, congratulations and thanks. I'll invite and tell them myself as well. But really lovely things are happening overall. And while I know we have challenges in certain areas, we're definitely working hard to ensure that we meet with all the students.
I am.
Thank you, sir.
Now I'm going to move to the business portion of our meeting. And the first item is public comments. The North Kids App School District Board of Directors welcomes the public to the open meeting, open public meeting. In accordance with board policy and state law, all meetings must be conducted in the civil, orderly and businesslike manner. This means that whether we are school directors, staff, students, members of the community or a guest, we must all follow the same standard of civility during school board meetings. We value public comment. The purpose of public comment is so that the public has an opportunity to speak to potential items on the agenda prior to board action consideration. Speakers can sign up by following the procedure outlined on every published agenda as well as being stated on the school district website. This signup process is intended to ensure that both in-person and virtual attendees have the same opportunity to sign up for public comment. Individual speakers are given three minutes for their comments. The board sets aside a maximum of thirty minutes for public comments per meeting. There's no mechanism for a speaker to donate some or all of their time to another speaker. The person who signed up to comment should be the same person who addresses the board. No speaker may speak more than once per meeting, even if there is time remaining. Please note that the board cannot engage in discussion with the speaker during public comment to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of Washington. Board will not respond to statements, questions or challenges made during the public comment period and there will be no back and forth dialogue. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker. The board may ask district staff to contact a speaker at a later time to follow up on issues raised during the public comment period. Finally, please remember that your words have impact and that you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it's possible that your statements could violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of the legal effect of your remarks, you should seek independent legal counsel prior to making your comments. Persons who attempt to disrupt the meeting in person will be asked to leave. If necessary, the board will recess and are adjourned to meeting. Law enforcement will be called on if the personal or physical safety of the lead attendee is threatened. Persons who attempt to disrupt the meeting via Zoom will be muted and removed from the webinar. When it is your turn to speak, please approach the podium if you are in person. If you are commenting via Zoom, you will be promoted to panelist on Zoom. You must then turn on your video and microphone to make a public comment. I believe we've seen how speakers is getting.
Could we have that translated? Please, will you be, does our translator? Can we have those stationed in Spanish, please? Um, can I, can you? Can she, can she have a paper so she can be addressed? Thank you.
Todos valoramos los comentarios. El propósito de los comentarios públicos es dar una oportunidad de hablar sobre la, los problemas potenciales o la agenda que hay que considerar. Los, las personas que van a hablar son las personas que se inscribieron según el procedimiento que se estableció en la agenda pública y como tal como está en el website. La manera de inscribirse, este proceso de inscribirse está asegurado, tiene que asegurar que la persona que va a atender, que va a hablar, es la persona que se inscribió, ya sea de manera personal, física o virtual. Las, los participantes que van a hablar de manera individual tienen tres minutos para hacer comentarios. Nosotros tenemos en este meeting, tenemos treinta minutos designados para hacer los comentarios públicos. No hay metáfora. No hay manera en que una persona que va a hablar le ceda su tiempo a otra. Eso no puede ser. La persona que fue, que fue la que firmó es la persona que tiene que hablar y hacia el board. Ningún, una persona que vaya a hablar puede hablar más de una vez en el meeting a un que otra persona le dé minutos o que le falte minutos. Ahí no hay ningún. Ninguna persona puede hablar más de una vez en el meeting. Por favor, note que el board no va a hacer ninguna discusión. No se van a echar con ningún. Ninguno de ustedes en la plática no va a contestar. Y si están callados, no significa absolutamente nada. Simplemente están escuchando. El board no va a responder ninguna, hacia ninguna, hacia ningún, ninguna afirmación, pregunta o reto que se les dé en público. Y no va a haber ningún diálogo entre ida y venida entre las personas. El silencio del board es neutral. No es ninguna señal de que estén de acuerdo ni que no estén de acuerdo con la persona que esté hablando. El board posiblemente le pide al distrito, al staff del distrito, para contactar a la persona que habló en un tiempo posterior como un seguimiento a los problemas que se den o que se expongan durante el meeting. Finalmente, por favor, recuerde que sus palabras tienen impacto y que usted es el responsable de sus palabras y no el distrito escolar. Tenga cuidado porque todos los, las personas que hablen es, es posible que sus afirmaciones puedan violar los derechos de otras en varias aspectos como la ley, como la ley de privacidad y como la difamación que está prohibida. Si usted no está seguro de los efectos legales de lo que usted pueda decir, debe de buscar independientemente una, un advice, a, excuse me. Consejo. De manera oficial, usted lo tiene que buscar por sí mismo. Las personas que, que atenden o que desordenen, Dilfrav. A que hagan algún desorden a quien el meeting en persona, serán, les pediremos que se vayan si es necesario. Y si también es necesario, el board puede pedir un receso del meeting si es así como lo consideran. Se pedirá que ayuda a la ley si la persona, si hay alguna posibilidad de que se dañe físicamente o hay alguna amenaza con respecto a las personas asistentes. La persona que haga una dilución en el Zoom por vía internet será, se le quitará el sonido, será mudo. Se mude, será. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor, acérrese aquí al podio si está usted en persona y si usted está conectado vía Zoom, le pedimos, por favor, que abra su micrófono para poder hablar. Y además, su video. Muchas gracias.
I'm here to talk about what I see in schools and stuff that I have opinions on and maybe we can move on. I don't know everything that the school board here is doing, but I know that there has been a lot of racism in the schools and I have seen a lot of racism. Well, not seen, but heard a lot of racism and I know it's happened to students. Many times when the students speak up, they tell other students rather than the teachers, rather than the staff, because sometimes the, the staff and the racist teachers just keep it silent. And I feel like more needs to be said about that. And also, earlier this year, when like translators weren't as prominent or like allowed to be given or provided. Well, I know that some students had, a student had come from Mexico and he couldn't speak. And then our teacher, who was very kind, he came and asked, he didn't know that translators could be available and because they haven't, they hadn't really told the teachers, so he asked a student and myself to maybe introduce him, which I feel like more information could have been given to him and he could have been provided a translator, the student himself, if he needed help that time because it wasn't fair for, to, for the teacher to just stand there silently because he felt he was embarrassed by trying to speak to him in English without knowing what he was saying. Also, I don't know how this works, but lots of teachers have unequal pain. I don't know if, if as a school board member or higher up, if you have a very high salary, are you allowed to give it to, like cut some of it to pay the teachers more? Because I know lots of them. Lots of them work really, really hard for the students and lots of pay cuts have been happening, such as limiting the teachers' resources that they use inside the school and inside the classroom. And it feels a little discouraging to the teachers because I know lots of students are hands-on and like to do things on paper. And the teachers have been putting it all online, which makes it a little harder. And I know that some teachers go out of their way to like move budget, their budget around and make sure that they can have something on paper to provide for the students. And I feel like that's really helpful. But some teachers just take it as, okay, I can't print anything and I'm going to just put it all online and it makes it very hard for us to learn and comprehend what's going on inside the classroom.
Next speaker is Angela Natalia Perez.
Angela Perez, and I will be reading a statement on behalf of Vanessa Mario, a current student at North Kids App High School. Racism is a big problem everywhere. Going to school felt like jail. I faced racism by teachers and students at Kingston High School. It got so bad, I had to move schools. I started to protest at Kingston High School and the teachers and principals didn't do anything about the problem. Some students even went and made fun of us. This is mentally draining. One of the teachers at Kingston High School, called yipuerta, Parrana, nata, which translates into pig, slop and ghetto. North Kids App is just as bad and I'm tired of no one taking this seriously. The school did nothing about it, which didn't surprise me. A teacher should never be racist. I should be able to speak Spanish and not get in trouble. I should be able to be who I am. I should be able to embrace my culture. I am Latina, I'm proud and I will keep my voice. Since I have some extra time, I would like to share some thoughts. I'd like to say what a shame it is to have so much privilege and power and not use it. Silence is complicity. Your silence interferes with speech loudly. Your inaction has turned from ignorance into choice. You are choosing to turn the other way. You are choosing comfort over growth. You are choosing to minimize this issue, so it seems like it hasn't been going on for generations. This is why I cannot understand Superintendent Evans in saying, there seems to only be one person stirring up others. Does this look like one person?
This is my first edition. To when I was in school and I graduated in 2008, and I know they go back further than we can imagine. I remember being in elementary school when my sister was in junior high. She would call me sister. When you get to middle school, they are racist and you have to defend yourself. No te dejes, which translates into don't let them. Barely thirteen, I quickly found out what she meant. I have stories and I'm sure if you search my name, you'll find the time I came to the district and shared what I had to say and nothing happened. I was resilient and managed to prove to a lot of people wrong. Through my higher education, I was empowered. They gave me the power that this school stripped from me. Now I'd like to speak on mental health. As a former employee of a mental health agency where I was hired to work with Spanish-speaking communities, I can tell you this is taking a toll on students' mental health. Some of our most basic needs such as humans include safety, security, love, and belonging. Needs that are not being met by the school district. I've had students reach out to me because of this movement telling me that they are feeling discouraged, that they have to go above and beyond in academics and in life to feel respected, that they feel like there is more multiculturalism. These kids are exhausted. Okay, and please again, tell us if this is just one person.
My name is Amy Sayer with Kids App Advocating for Immigrant Rights and Equality, CARE. We're standing here today. Not one person, as you can see, a lot of families, and they can't even fit. They're outside the door. We're asking for the district to implement standard operating procedures in response to the racial violence and threats that have been happening in the schools and it's not just recently. A lot of the tribes, tribal members, youth, the families, Black, Indigenous, people of color, now you're seeing the Latinx community stand up. Since 1970, thousands of cases have come before the district and nothing has been done. This isn't just today, it's not just seven months ago. These families, the families alongside with CARE, have been trying to meet with the district. Dr. Evans, since November, it's seven months we haven't heard from you. We still, families created a list of seven solutions. We have yet to hear a response. We need restorative practices in place that will protect Black, Indigenous, and all people of color, students of color, and families. And there needs to be a process in place. For the restorative practice, we wanted to know, we want to know what the wellness survey is and we're asking the district, what is the data on the school's safety climate? Are you aware of the students of color reports that indicate safety and what is the district doing about it? Because we only have thirty minutes and there's only ten people, but we have over a hundred people here. There's a collective community message that we want to bring right now.
¿Qué queremos?
Justicia.
¿Cuándo?
Ahora.
¿Qué do we want?
Justice.
¿Cuándo we want it?
Now.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Hi and I grew up at North Kids App School District. I went to David H. Woodley and my family and I was the only Black family born to David there and I was the only African-American girl and another young lady named Wendy. And hopefully I would always get asked, is she your sister? And some kids I hopefully would never see, had never seen a Black girl before and didn't want to be around me and wouldn't play with me. And teachers had a hard time understanding how to foster a relationship between us. And the teachers would often tell me, just ignore it and it's okay if people don't play with you. I then went to Keith Junior High, which is now Kingston Middle School, and I was sent to the principal's office because the teacher that I dealt with in assembly, he said he only saw me in the crowd. Given the fact that I was the only African-American girl in the crowd, that's probably why I stood out. I missed assembly and when I got on the bus, the principal and the teacher told me I should choose a different seat next time and never took responsibility for their wrong. Finishing off my high school experience at North Kids App High School, I was in a math class and my math teacher told me I was not going to get an A+ in his class, no matter how hard I worked, because he was only going to give an A+ to five students and he doesn't think that I will make it in the top five by the end of the year. I'm saying this to say that racism is a fabric and a norm at North Kids App. And when you hear truths about racism, you need to change the atmosphere, the policies, and change your culture. We need to set policies to speak up about the experiences. Me, my experiences, my experience today should be confirming enough that every story needs to be told and every action does not need a huge investigation, but what needs to happen is change in the action and change in the scholars at the school. I'm an adult woman that is raising two strong kids, boys, Zion Zefin, who went to Villan... who went to Villan. Three weeks in, Zefin going to school, he was on the bus and the bus driver told him he was going to kick him off the bus because he was too excited and they didn't know what to do with that. And I was thinking, he's only a kindergartner. You're really threatening to kick a kindergartner off the bus this soon? A month later, that's when my boys were being called the N-word. And when I went back to talk to the teachers or talked to the school about it, they then said, well, the family that, who was calling the child, that is a really great family and we did what we can to protect them and they just promised that they won't ride the bus for the rest of the year. One of the things I believe strongly is one of my favorite quotes. Diversity is a fact, equality is a choice, or inclusion is a choice, and action, and belonging is the action, the belonging is the outcome. Arthur Chen. I believe that because if we really foster role-playing and creating of systems where, I'm talking about changing the system. Schools are still a system like a jail system, so you have to change the system. Black, Latino, and South, all of the South will foster relationships and change the...
Toma, toros, los estudiantes. Share the history here. Over five years ago, we came to visit you, Dr. Evans, myself, and Robert Bowdy to talk about the racial issues that have taken place here in this school district for over three decades with our Native, our African-American students, and our Latinx students. This is a longstanding history. I have my own history of racism in this school. When we first moved here, we moved to Posable before we moved to Bainbridge. And I had to pull my daughter out of preschool and first grade because of the racial bullying and the threats that was made on her as a child. This is unacceptable and it's a longstanding history that has to be addressed. We can no longer tuck this under the rug as if it doesn't happen. We have to begin to deal with it. And for us to just erase and turn blind eye to it is not the solution. You have here in your own mission statement, you say that this is a place of inclusion and welcoming, but that's not so. It says here diverse voices in a unified direction. I say, what direction are you going in? Where is your district improvement plan on race equity, inclusion, and diversity? You say that you're doing these things. You say that you want to build strong relationships with families and community. Well, look at your families and community. So that you can begin to hear what their concerns are, but yet they have been silenced. You say in your own that you want to be accountable and culturally responsive and you want this teaching and learning to happen in your school district. I say you perpetrate the fraud, because you are not abiding by your own mission statement. You're not abiding by what you say is what you value. You say you value these things, well, look at your community that says you're not valuing the culture. You're not valuing who they are as a people. You're not teaching their children. You as superintendent, you, the superintendent, you are responsible for their safety and their health and their well-being, and that's for all students, that's what you say in your policy. But I'm saying to you here today, you are accountable for their safety in this school. When things start rolling down, it's going to roll on your head. So I'm saying, where can you get with these families and begin to start the healing and start the reconciliation, because harm has been done. Racial harm has been done.
So I'm requesting a program. One, based on research on learning. So quote, "In times of change, learners inherit the earth, while the learners find themselves beautifully equipped as a leader for worlds that no longer exist." With the rapidly changing times we're now experiencing, quite literally, being a learner is paramount. So let's look at a learner and the process of learning. Feeling free, feeling playful, feeling open, feeling safe, focused on interest and curiosities, asking questions. Henry, unless you do your schoolwork, you don't get recessed. Now, the group will get done, because Henry knows he's learning. But what is learning? Especially, what is he learning about learning? Learning cannot be forced. Learning is allowed. The most important learning we do happens through experience. For instance, freedom. Land of the free is questionable when children by law must attend an institution whose primary aim is to tame their wellness, their curiosity, their energy, and sometimes their desire to learn. It's a well-intentioned institution trying to create, earn it, people who get into the greatest cog in society. The children don't have a choice, they got bound. Our country experiences growing pains, divisive rhetoric, homelessness, upward trend of mental illness, and repression and driving, the rise of children, and so on. Generating learners who love learning must be priorities. The thoroughly researched book Free to Learn that I gave last year to all the board members paints a positive picture for the future. First, we get to realize that allowing our children to play and learn when they are ready provides the learning experiences they each want and will need for their future. Children living the naturally self-guided model of education, as expressed in Peer's Book, would experience freedom, not just the word. Develop self-reliance, learn to play with others' requests, a give-and-take process, be open to identify their own interests and pursue them as fully and as long as they wish. And when the full model is implemented, they participate in an ongoing democratic process of running the program there. North Kids App has a secondary program called Choice Academy. What is not a program for all ages, a learning academy. Giving the parents and children of the district a choice to let their children learn freely. Some people now homeschooling, may be interested in this as the age mixing.
Mixing of ages. Sorry, Jeremy.
Anyway. I always sent you an email that says this. Please let me know what you decide.
The next speaker is Mario Cruz. Sorry, because the translations were turned up all the time, so allow for the interpretation to take place.
You know, Mario Pérez, residente de Posable desde 1989, padre de tres hijos.
My name is Mario Pérez. I am living in Posable since 1989 and I have three children.
Los tres estuvieron en Villan, en Estel Junior High de aquí, y el High School de Posable.
Three of these were in schools here that were...
The comments, perdón, los comentarios que estamos escuchando aquí de falta de protección a los alumnos, no es nuevo.
The comments about lack of protection for students are not new.
Hoy les explico que mis tres hijos, los tres fueron víctimas de discriminación, acoso, y estereotipo.
I would like to explain to you that my three children were victims of, um, acoso, harassment, and...
Discriminación.
Discrimination and...
Estereotipo.
I don't want to say stereotype.
Stereotipo. Okay, let me try with my English, little bit. Yes, yes. So today, I can tell you that they survived. It wasn't easy. I came to meetings like this, okay? And tried to voice myself for them. I know it's not easy. We have different cultures. We grew, born in different countries, but it can be done. It can be done. So I can tell you stories about them, calling them, more than half a dozen of names, wet bags, dinners, taco time, Taco Bell, go to Mexico, and then all that. That's not healthy for the students. And they count. They count on our district because they want to become something like you, like me. You know, they want to be counted as a good resource of your school district. So that said, now they grow up, they have their own lives. I have professionals. I have, you know, a daughter that is happily married, very successful, and her life as a parent. And now today I'm here for my granddaughters, which are having the same here in high school. I'm here for them. And I just want you to let you know something that you might know that you have the same problem. With more complications and drugs. Batrooms are very much kidnapped by the users. And I have seen comments of my daughter that she has to wait and that she go home so she can call a bat. Because the batrooms are used by somebody else. Anyways, just want to let you know, now we are in a different community. We are a global community. It's no longer, now you have here Mexicans, Vietnamese, Filipinos, all kinds, all kinds. So we need to approach different tactics. What worked before, maybe it doesn't work today. My idea is we have to do something. We want to avoid a hate crime because of ignorance and because we don't do nothing. And I guess it happened already, some threats. We cannot wait and something has to be done. We can work as a group. I know for either one of you, it might be too much to handle, but we have to start. We have to start and that's my consent on your proposal. We have to start, and that's my consensus on your proposal.
I wanted to talk about two, just in case, I have also made a call. Yeah, yeah. So, buenas tardes. Quisiera comentar primero, dar las gracias al al frente de Kids Up School for its duty, but also quiero decir que es un poco indignado por el proceso de el rollo para, por ejemplo, la forma. Because it only allows like twenty-five minutes for a role.
Do you want me to translate?
Yes.
Okay. He feels like a little bit
Six minutes.
Okay, I mean, continue. Okay, he feels like a little bit
Eh, digna?
Digna.
Digna. Because of the process that we have to get into the work.
Yeah, because I also have a family after the meeting, and that's not clear for all the families here. And then also, I had also like worry about the other remarks, about how to break the discussion. I think it was not a proper introduction to the families here about how to break the discussion and talking about what's in legal consequences for standing.
I want to say that I am working in a institution. At an institution, a public institution through the river.
En donde las familias, porque no siguen translators en Poldbo.
Because the families are not getting translators here in Poldbo. They have to go through the river.
And then sometimes I need to read like their plans about like individualized education plans, letters about meal prices. A kind of says, like, there's a lot of like documents that are right now on the webpage that are not in English, that they're not in Spanish. I'll give you an example. There's a document, Refer for Special Education Acquisition. That form is not accessible in Spanish. And that's the form that people use to request la formación especial. La forma no está en español. La forma de six stages, the second language is in español.
So the form for a request special education is not in Spanish? And also the form for
The six stages of education.
The six stages of education language acquisition is not in Spanish?
Also, the webpage translation is a bit misleading and inaccurate since it's made via an automatic translator. Many families feel that they're confused when they log into the webpage and they go on the left side corner and it's like the Spanish is not accurate, like because it's made by an automated process.
Sorry, I'm gonna pause for a second, we'll reset for, I think, one or two more minutes. But it's hard because you're translating some and then a lot of it is starting to
That's how my home line starts, you know?
I want to also ask, talk about
La ayuda que tienen los estudiantes para enrollar en college.
The help that students have for enrollment in college.
Yes. So those four, like, surveys right now, I don't know why it's not being provided, but there are organizations in Breverton such as Kids Up Strong that the district can come and they can have students fill that form too. Also, like, there are a lot of letters that have read, like, Spanish-speaking parents that are still not receiving communication from school that have been translated from English. And then sometimes I feel bad because I don't know how to translate. As you can see right now, I know English, I know a lot of English, so I need to request a translator. Imagine all the people coming from Breverton that are from Poldbo to like Breverton just because of translator, that they're supposed to have this phone. And then Otra cosa son las versiones de las comidas.
The food prices, the meals.
The meal prices. Hay una ayuda que se supone que se otorga a las personas de bajos ingresos.
So there's a help for people who have low income.
Y muchas personas piensan que han estado siendo excluidas de la misma por no tener una residencia legal dentro de Poldbo.
A lot of people is thinking that they are being excluded from that because they don't have legal residency.
Especialmente las personas, eh, que son migrantes.
Especially the insole immigrants?
Yes. And then for us, like, the individualized education plans, they're coming out in English and they take months so the parents can read them in English, in Spanish. So maybe that's something that you guys can help on the translation. Because
He said that people can use.
Okay. So those are many remarks. Thank you very much for your time and for letting us.
Speaker is Jose Castro. Ah, sorry, sorry, next one, I'm sorry. The next speaker is Natasha Sucktow-Winger.
Hi, my name is Natasha, and my son, Antonio, attends Choice Academy. I have to say that I was shocked and dismayed to see Penny Terrance's resignation listed in the minutes. If one of the four pillars in our district's journey towards excellence is attracting the routine, talented, and committed staff, we are failing. Principal Terrance is an asset to our entire district. She is overseeing NKOA, PAL, and Choice Academy, as well as providing leadership in two other buildings in our district. Principal Terrance is irreplaceable. Her dedication to our students is nothing short of extraordinary. Each of our students are known by their name, by their strength, and by their needs. Under her leadership, our entire community is preparing for a world yet imagined. I have not met a more talented and committed administrator in the fourteen years that I have been navigating public school in the Kids Up Peninsula. The decision to resign could not have been easy for her. It saddens me to think that our district isn't doing everything possible to keep educators like her here in our district with our students. I'm asking you to revoke your consent agenda, deny her resignation, and negotiate whatever supports are needed for her to stay. I know that's a big ask, but I wanted to make sure that that was said out loud and on the record, and I'll be looking for it in the minutes when you approve them next time. Choice Academy is serving a population of students in a way that exceeds every aspect of our strategic plan. In three minutes, I can't go into detail about the mission and the vision and the core values, the goals or the four pillars. But they are all easy to identify in our students, in our staff, and in the entire community that supports our campus. I brought some of that community with me here tonight. Other parents and students from Choice Academy, we want to remind you that our school is vital. I know it's small and I know the budget is tight. Without a dedicated principal, we're concerned, we have concerns, and we're prepared to speak out and make sure that our school remains in our building, that our staff remains intact and supported, and that we continue to progress towards the goals and aspirations that have been established by the staff and the community because of Principal Terrance's leadership. We're here because choice matters. I'd also just like to add, your community has spoken. The way that, the amount of time it takes to be able to speak in front of you is onerous and unacceptable. Please do better. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Gloria Crane.
My maiden name is Gloria Macías. I am the daughter of migrant workers. And so it saddens me to hear that things that I went through as a little girl are still happening in 2023. It's so sad. But anyway, so growing up as a migrant worker daughter, I was placed in a school where no one spoke any Spanish. I did not speak any English. My parents were not educated. Their goal was work. The female's goal was to work and provide for the men. So I was short-changed on education. And it's so important for our youth nowadays. They have so much knowledge, so much wisdom that we even learn from them. All we have to do is listen to them. I want to tell you something that happened to me in school when I was back home. So I used to stay after school to play ball because I loved playing ball. Well, this one young boy exposed himself to me. I went to my mother, and because my dad at the time was an illegal alien, he was not legal in the United States, they were afraid to go to the police. And many students might have parents or grandparents that are afraid, so they don't come forward for that reason. They're silent, the children want to do it, but their mothers or their grandmothers say, no, mi hijo, or mi hija, don't, daughter or son, don't say anything because then the law will be brought on us. So they keep a low profile. I'm talking about the parents, not the children. The youth nowadays, use your voice, use your voice that you have for the grandmothers and the mothers that thought so much of you. That the young boy exposed himself to me. I went to my mom and she said, no, this isn't right. So she went to the principal. Of course, the principal didn't do one thing about it. Not one thing. She didn't even check into it. So a lot of times, these students here, I'm not saying you believe it, but there'll be a football player that they'll believe over maybe a common Mexican or a common Asian or a common somebody that's a migrant worker's kid or a cheerleader that don't say, oh, this girl could never lie. But this Mexican can lie. And so the first thing I want to say to let you know is that the one thing that was told to me when I was little, and I'll never forget it, was they called me a dirty Mexican. And I couldn't believe why. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for speaking. Our next item is superintendent report, Dr. Evans, do you have a report to board this evening?
I do, very brief. I just wanted to note that last week we did recognize our staff and teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week, which is recognized nationally in the first week of May. And I just wanted to remind the board that in this season, we have a lot of end-of-year events, several things going on. Please check the calendar that's provided. And just a reminder to let me know if you'll plan to attend so that we can post form those that's required by opening.
Board reports. Does any board member have a report to share regarding your assigned liaison position?
Just quick for the WIA, there were eleven resolutions that came across. And eight of them were adopted, really, you know, in fact. So I think this is just about what was in the process for reevaluating evaluation schools based on student populations for what they're doing.
I would just like to say that KCAC, there's ongoing efforts to develop ideas and plans for housing, so that is one of them. And so we're interested in supporting those efforts.
Moving to the action portion, I'll move to the consent agenda. I do need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. I do need a second. The motion has been made in seconds for approval of the consent agenda. Items 8.1.1 through 8.1.5. Is there any discussion in the board? I put a question to the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
No. Yes.
And yes. Motion passes 4-0. Next item is the management report. We're doing a number of them this time. I will turn the management report to the two, Dr. Evans and your staff, to answer any questions of the board on the material that's been provided to us. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And so as usual, the items are posted Friday before the meeting, and so the board and the public have ample time to review the items that are posted. The management report, the first management report provided this evening is a update on the annual budget development process. And if there are questions about this particular report, I'd ask you to come up to the podium and address the questions. Sorry, it's difficult to conduct the order of the board. It's a lot of background discussion. Thank you for your understanding.
No questions. I thought it was a good report. Appreciate that. Definitely, it's a tough process to do, so appreciate the effort.
I guess I would just like to note and thank him, Mike, for including this in the presentation. It was listed that there's 2.9 billion new in education spending for 2023 to 2025, and yet 2.6 billion of that is required for maintenance level. So it's interesting. Further provided, the education
Can we have someone at least close the doors to the lobby or to ask people in the lobby to step out? People's meeting, the business meeting. Thank you.
So to continue, that 2.6 billion of the 2.9 billion is required for maintenance level. And what maintenance level means is just keeping his debt as low.
Here in the audience, we are conducting a business meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. If you want to have a conversation, we kindly ask you to please step outside the doors. Thank you.
Anyway, my point is that the largest percentage of that is for maintenance of items that are already in place and already happening. And that just reflects basically inflation and cost of living. And 2019, education was 52% of the total state general fund budget. And in 2325, education budget is 44% of the state budget. So thank you, Mike, for including that.
I just wanted to note about the special education cap increase, but then you said it didn't really, doesn't make it impact as much. But I'm guessing that doesn't, I know with special ed, there's the initial money, but then there's the safety net money. So I just, I didn't know with the safety net, how that comes into play?
Sure.
Since we're under the 1315, so is that, that's just the initial special ed allocation? It's not?
Yeah, the state funds up to currently 13.5% of your basic ed population for special ed students. We're below the threshold now. It's going to increase to 15%. So we're already protected from that perspective. So there isn't going to be change there. The safety net, even if you're below the cap, if you have high-cost students, then you have the opportunity to apply for money from the state to reimburse the district for any amount over a threshold. It's like twice the amount of money that is spent on a special ed student. So what the legislature did was they have lowered the threshold to start reimbursing for safety nets. So they're allowing us to collect a little bit more money for every one of those applications that we submit. And then the bulk of the new money for us in special ed is where they've changed the, there's different funding factors for how much time a special ed student spends in regular ed. So the more time that they spend in the regular ed classroom, there's a higher funding level attached to the student. And it's, the purpose is to try to have as much inclusion as possible and keep the students in the regular ed classroom. And so And so that's where we will see the largest increase in those three areas.
Okay. Uh, it sounds like without anything else, we get everything and move in the right directions, even if it isn't as far as we want, so.
Thank you. I'll move on to the next management report, which is asset preservation program, the inventory condition of schools. And the report is mainly a report that we provide for OSPI in terms of filing about the condition of schools. Are there any questions about this management report? The next item on the management report is, uh, we talked about this before, it is the updating for unerated power supplies and wireless access points. And we put this forward as partly covered by E-Rate and it will partly come from capital project. Are there any questions about this item? Uh, we are well grounded in life on a lot of these details, so it's very much needed. Uh, the next item on the management report is Pulseville Middle School Building Two Edition. Uh, we've been talking about this for some time, as you are all very well aware. We've gone through an extensive process, um, with the architects and we are now putting the project out to bid. This is for a connecting building that will cojoin, uh, the gym cafeteria facility with the core instructional academic wings. And it will be adding a number of classroom spaces over the space of two stories and a lab. Are there questions about this particular project?
To say you know I love this project. The only thing is, is I just want to keep going to the next building.
Thank you. I am aware.
But yeah, this is great. I can't wait to hit this building.
The next management report, the next two I'm going to talk about together, these are bold improvements that we'll be doing under the current capital, uh, capital program. Um, the safe locking pass is going to allow us to essentially take what is a dirt road from around the back end of Finland and do some gravel and paving work. Um, this helps with the new drop off pickup process that's been underway there for the last year or so that has been helping quite a bit in terms of traffic management. Uh, and then also looking at a project at Richard Gordon Elementary, which I know will bring a lot of happiness to folks up there because we've heard a lot about this playfield for years. Um, we are going to attempt to improve the playfield at Gordon as well. These are both summer program projects that are going out for bid. So we just wanted to be aware of this, of these come back as action as well. So you'll see all of these again.
I was actually very excited to see both of these on here.
Yes, me as well. I was just going to say, we are going to do our level best at Richard Gordon. I think what's hard is a lot of the terrain here when it's hard pan, it's really difficult to actually mitigate with drainage. So we're going to make an effort at mitigating the issues there, but I, we'll see what we see. We've done this in several locations and we've talked with our friends down in Central Kids Up and they've undertaken similar work, um, with mixed results. So, but we feel like it is well worth the effort to try to improve that playfield for our kids.
Absolutely.
I just have one question. The drawing was kind of hard to tell. I know from when I've been to Gordon a couple of times when it was drop off time or pickup time, um, a lot of people park in grass because there wasn't enough parking for all the cars. This doesn't, I don't think it reaches that far.
It's the, it's the playfield that's up to the, like, if you're looking at the front door of Gordon, there's a playfield up to the left where people are parking. It's kind of down in front of the, the building. So we're talking about this playfield area that's up to the left.
Because you know, that's the last thing, I was just thinking, the last thing I want to do is, is do a really shallow, shallow field and park line.
Those are all of the management reports for this evening.
All right. So we are going to now adjourn the meeting and we are moving into a closed exempt session, uh, per RCW 4230, 140, to discuss bargaining.
For those of you who are attending the meeting via Zoom, with the adjournment of the meeting, we will be closing the Zoom session. Thank you for being here.
I'm sorry, I had good. I'm not saying it in front of daddy.
I'm gonna go as hard as I can. It's not mine.
There, there is a more grace system. If you read that north, that, uh.
Your mom told me that you're not supposed to leave.
No, I'm just.